Amy, everyone, want to call the East Greenwood Central School District Board of Education Meeting for September 27th to order. Board members here this evening, all board members present except for Emily. She, we do anticipate that she is going to be able to make it. With that, if you could please rise and join me in the pledge. Thank you, everyone. So first order of business is our student council representatives from Columbia High School. Ron and Cole, welcome. See ya. Welcome, Cole. First meeting?
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all again. I would like to formally introduce Cole Hardy as our Vice President and Camilla Convoy as our Treasurer. These two are very awesome. I'm super, super happy that I get to share this council with them. So next week is our Spirit Week, and we have five super fun dress up days leading up to the pep rally on Friday, then the homecoming game and the homecoming dance. And Spirit weekdays include pajama day, Western Wednesday, and more. We're super excited to be hosting the pep rally again this year. We have so many amazing events planned and kicking off the competition is our annual bridge painting on Saturday. We cannot wait to see everyone's outfits and show some school spirit. Also, we have been hard at, hard at work transforming ideas and making this year's homecoming decorations. This theme is under the sea and we are super excited to get decorating. Homecoming is Saturday, the 7th, running from 7 to 10. And in partnership with All Sports Club, we are going to hopefully make this one the best one yet. And thank you guys for your time again tonight, and that's all that we have for you.
I saw the outfit kind of things on the post. That was pretty cool. The different kind of, yeah, it looks like a real three five. I'll have to see some pictures. Next order of business is the minutes from August 29th without, oh, she's here. Awesome. So we'll let her get settled. At the board meeting on August 29th, I have John was not present. Cheryl, Mark, and Michelle. So we do still have a quorum with Emily here. So with that, any changes, revisions to the minutes on August 29th? Seeing none, need a motion to approve those minutes. Jennifer, second, Jesse, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Approved. Next, we have the minutes from September 13th. John was not here and Emily was not here, so need a motion to approve those minutes. If there's no changes, revisions, Joanne, second, Jesse, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Done and Emily approved. Thank you very much. Now move to our board forum and up for the board members to speak on topics of relevance to the district. We'll start on my left with Cheryl, who's taking some minutes because Jeannie is not here. Cheryl, anything?
No, but I didn't do, who seconded the last one? I didn't get it.
Yes.
He did the second one, first one too. Okay.
It's consistent. Appreciate it. John, can see you. Mark, Jennifer?
The only thing is I know the All Sports Club is looking for volunteers for the homecoming dance, all different capacities. Apparently you don't have to be in the gym. I've heard there's different roles. So if any parents are interested, they are needed for next weekend.
Thanks, Jennifer. Jesse, Joanne, Emily. All right. I don't have anything else to time. Moving on to the public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenwood Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and or operations of the district of the matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to assistance concerns in public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact individuals in the future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protection, it must be stressed the business forum is not deemed to be to open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and will be cleared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Is there anyone like to address the board this time? Students, anything? It was your chance. No? Okay. We will move from our public forum to reports and presentations of the superintendent assignments.
Yes, I just have a brief presentation to update the board and the community regarding current status of capital project planning. The community is aware that we are in the process of completing project that was approved by the voters in 2017 for school renovations and construction. Last part of that project is the Janay Playground, which is currently in process and hoping to get that playground work done at some point during the school year. Additionally, I announced at the last meeting that the district would be selecting a new architectural firm. Bella, architectural firms, engineering firm, they were approved by the board at the last meeting. This week, Jen Mulligan, our Director of Business and Finance, Paul Bickel and myself met with Bella to share information to discuss the status of the work that we have done. Preliminary work, including the five-year plan, the building condition survey, and we provided them the data that they need to begin to think about and talk with us about the design of the next project. Additionally, we have a committee that will be reviewing and meeting with new construction management firms. We have four construction management firms, the construction manager firm, different than the architect oversees the actual process of construction when that construction is occurring. There's a meeting in October 4th, which we will be interviewing those firms and the committee will be Mike, you know, Mark Mann, our Board President and Board Vice President, Jen Mulligan, our Director of Business and Finance, Paul Bickel, our Director of Facilities, and myself. We hope to be able to select a construction management firm in time for the, hopefully the, at least the second meeting in October of the board. And we are also planning for the second meeting in October to have our architectural firm come to the meeting with our fiscal advisor, which is Capital Markets. Rick Gancy works for them and he has been meeting with us to talk about how certain cost factors, including our current debt, maximum cost allowance associated with each buildings could affect the overall cost of the project that we bring to the voters. And he's going to share information with you regarding the overall options in terms of the overall dollar amount of a project that we could afford to do without raising the impact on the taxpayers. We've looked at three different levels in considerate consideration of the work that we need to do. I will say in general, we have finalized the information. It's very preliminary, but we will be rolling out an option that is probably larger in scope than what we've done in the past. But that, that large scope reflects the amount of work that we need to get done in the district. And we're trying to craft our project in a way that there would be no additional tax impact because we are in the process of retiring debt from previous capital projects. So Rick Gancy has all that information. He'll be here and he'll share that information. We do have our architects here as well to talk about what the steps might be in terms of putting together a project proposal for the board to review. We also are going to be having stakeholder meetings once the board sees this information. And the architects have indicated that they're eager to start to work with administrators and staff and faculty and community members in the district to start discussions of the project. So we're moving forward in terms of our next capital project.
Jeff, will he present a timeline for us like you just mentioned? Yes, the stakeholder meeting communications, things like that.
Yes, the architects have worked already with the district and they have a proposed timeline for the project. They're looking for information on, you know, who we want them to meet with, who we want them to talk to. But the timeline is geared towards complying with all of the state requirements, including the secret review, bringing a proposal to the board for discussion at least a couple of times, working with the BRAC Committee and other stakeholder groups to help define the project more specifically. And then hopefully go over a vote in the spring of 2024, which will be our next budget vote on that same day. There's a lot of work to be done in a short period of time. A lot of the preliminary work has already been done by Paul Bickel. Jennifer, LaChase has been involved in a pre-refereendum contract that the board approved and working through information through a software program that is pretty sophisticated. All of our data is now entered into. We can capture different options within that software tool to look at different project scopes. Too, I know in a previous meeting it goes over golf where we had a list of things for the project that we were interested in, and it was a lot of input by the board. Has that list been shared with the architect? That, that list was updated in terms of the cost of each of those items that was done by LaChase. And that estimation has been shared with our architect. I believe they have, I'm not sure. I believe they already had access to the data files because they work with LaChase on other projects. So I think we provided them with some information that they're going to access other information on the agenda.
Yes, yeah, we're working on getting access to those specific details.
Everything's been updated in terms of cost and everything that was presented at the summer board meeting is in there. There may be a few additional things that we put in there. Once we, you know, once we engage with LaChase in the pre-refereendum. Everything in there is approximately $145 million.
I know some of us have been involved in the process of selection for the architects and of course the construction management services. I do want to stay close to this project and high level of interest in this one. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to discussion items, the code of conduct for 2324. Any, I'm going to team myself a little bit.
Yes, let me ask Marissa, as I get my computer back. To go over the changes that have been made to the code of conduct. We did a review with our attorneys, look at our current code of conduct. We make sure that the code of conduct was in compliance with any recent commissioners' decisions regarding discipline in public schools. Different federal and state determinations that have been made regarding provisions such as the Dignity for All Students Act, which covers bullying, harassment, and discrimination. The review included updating definitions of certain categories of incident. To make the descriptions more specific and also comply with legal requirements. We also looked at issues around due process for students and parents and recent decisions that have been made that provide us with more information that we need to be deliberate about the due process rights of the students and the parents. Some of that language was included within the code of conduct, including the appeals process. And we also met with the board policy committee to specifically look at some changes to the code of conduct around use of electronic devices such as cell phones as well as dress code and other issues that the board policy committee advised us to take a look at. We made some changes based on that discussion with our attorneys. Then we met with the Code of Conduct Committee, which is the district committee. So everything that's presented tonight reflects all of those changes and we feel confident recommending these changes for the board. Let Marissa go over the changes.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. So for our definition section, it's section two in the code of conduct. We had several modifications. The first was that we added a definition for harassment and bullying to include a subdefinition of emotional harm as is now required by DASSA. We also added definitions for material incident of harassment, bullying, and discrimination, and added a definition of retaliation for in order to comply with DASSA. We inserted definitions for illegal substances, tobacco product, and under the influence so that the associated disciplinary infractions highlighted.
Can you just bring up the memo part? Because you're reading off, you're pulling over the memo, aren't you?
Yeah, it's going to be difficult, Peter, to go through the actual document.
Yeah, just do this. If you can make this. Just so people can see it. Make it a little bigger.
We're at that top row definition section. We also added to the weapons definition, toy or replica slash fake weapon. And after consultation with our policy committee and our code of conduct committee, we felt it was necessary to add an electronic device definition that's in accordance with our electronic device policy, which is section seven now of the code of conduct. For dress code, that is now section six of the code of conduct. We modified this section to make the language gender neutral. So for example, we've removed references to specific items of clothing typically worn by females. In addition, we also added language indicating that students will not be disciplined for wearing certain protective hairstyles, which is in accordance with the Crown Act, and that students won't be disciplined for dressing in a way that expresses their gender identity. We deleted the item which indicated that students could not wear loungewear or pajama wear. And we've included large over the shoulder bags in item 10 as a prohibited item to carry after consultation with our building principals at the middle school level and our high school level.
One thing I would add to this is when we met with the Code of Conduct Committee, you'll see it in the actual code of conduct document, principals have the discretion to permit students to carry those bags. For example, we have situations where students have struggles to carry certain items from class to class or have tough schedules to get to class. Principals felt that in some cases, those bags would be permitted upon approval of the principal. So that's not reflected in this document, but it is reflected in the actual code of conduct.
Our new electronic device policy. We've created a new section and that section in the code of conduct is broken into a K-12 section, a K-8, and a 912. And we've also updated both the K-8 and 912 infraction charts to simply refer back to that section. But one of the pieces of feedback we've received from our code of conduct committee that simply a student texting in class would have a different violation than a student who was videotaping maybe a fight or doing something on social media to cause harm to somebody else. So we wanted to make sure that those infractions had different consequences. So if we go to our section eight behavioral expectations, this is where we've added that violation. So the new violation is recording of another student or adult without their permission or for the purpose of causing disruption to the educational environment, which would be in violation of that electronic device policy. And we've included a range of consequences from parent contact to at a school suspension, police contact, and a superintendent's hearing based on the severity of that infraction.
Well, we met with the board policy committee. The board policy committee felt that the location of the infraction where it says recording somebody without their permission was at the bottom of the page. And that should be more in a prominent because it was a more severe infraction than simply carrying a cell phone. So we took that feedback, we rearranged the document, and we added a specific, more specific description. And with input from the principals, they delineated that in some cases, you know, recording is done in a different context. Ms. Russell said, recording for the purposes of antagonizing the fight or causing further disruption to the school is different than perhaps a type of recording that's being done with more innocent intentions. So the principals wanted some discretion to be able to look at the context of what was occurring, when it was occurring, intend of what was occurring. But the board policy committee felt that this should have a higher degree of prominence in the document itself. And should come before, you know, carrying a cell phone, using a cell phone within the school. So we made that adjustment as well.
In the reporting violations, section nine, we needed to insert language regarding the district's response to harassment and bullying, which is required by the commissioner's regulations and or our DASSA policy. For disciplinary penalties, we even inserted language regarding progressive discipline. In section 13, this deals with short-term and long-term suspensions. We deleted the language that allowed a parent to appeal a short-term suspension because it is not required by law. However, the district is required by law to allow for appeals to the board if it's a long-term suspension. So there is a difference between that short and long-term suspension.
We also clarified the current code of conduct has language in the introductory pages that talks about the appeals process to the board. And we just made it clear in this document that that appeals process would not be an in-person appeal. It is a written appeal and there are certain expectations that that information be provided to the board in advance of a board meeting in that both I provide the information that I'm required to provide it to you in the event of appeal and that the parent provide a written request and adequate notification. So all of those things are recommended by attorneys as part of the process for a parent to appeal the suspension. Principals are limited to suspension of only five days in a public school in New York State. When an incident rises to a level of seriousness or if there are multiple incidents that continue to happen, a principal can request the superintendent's disciplinary hearing. During that hearing, superintendent provides due process for family and a student considers a longer term suspension. And in some cases, the parents choose to appeal that determination of the superintendent's hearing and have the right of appeal all the way up to the Commissioner of Education. So this language in here just kind of makes it very clear as to what that due process is supposed to be.
Our referral section, which is section 14, we needed to add language that the school counselors will make referrals to appropriate human services agencies as required by commissioner regulation. And we were also advised that we needed to delete the reference to section 221.05 of the penal law as a reason for filing a PINS petition. The section of that law was removed when marijuana was legalized and therefore it no longer is applicable to PINS. And then lastly, there was a corporal punishment section within our code of conduct. We have since removed that entire section effective on August 2nd of 2023. New regulations went into effect to prohibit corporal punishment and to significantly limit the use of physical restraint. And the regulations do require a new board policy, staff training. And most likely, we will have to start looking at that board policy soon. Once that occurs, we can then for next year modify the corporal punishment section to reflect any changes that were made. Anyone have any questions?
I would just add one thing, one thing throughout the document that has been added and Marissa mentioned it earlier. You know, progressive discipline that, that our attorneys have recommended and we've been participating in a lot of workshops. We're not just punishing kids who misbehave, but we're also providing interventions and supports and services that students may need that once in place effectively reduce incidents of discipline for that particular child. The other part to progressive discipline is looking at the developmentally appropriateness of certain responses. So we all have seen on the news, you know, high profile cases where a young child accidentally picks up a jackknife on the sidewalk and comes to school and somebody finds his backpack and no intention to harm anybody or do anything and we see a story where a student suspended long-term or something like that. So the commissioner is looking very carefully at cases that are appealed and wants to make sure that schools are doing everything they can to prevent exclusionary practices. Sometimes that's not possible. Sometimes consequences of a school suspension, our school suspension have to occur given the nature of some of the behavior, but at the same time, we're being, we're educators and we're charged to put educational programs and services in place that tended to prevent those behaviors from occurring. So some of that language is also.
Thank you, Marissa. Any questions, comments? Appreciate all the work that went into it. Good changes. Anyone who's involved the policy committee, so nice job. And there is a resolution shortly to approve the code of conduct for 2324. All right. So that moves us to regular business. The first item is approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any questions or comments?
Nothing. Dr. Benek is here. Anything?
Okay, very good. Thank you. Seeing none, need a motion to approve that. John, second. Mark, all those in favor? So we have two tenure resolutions on the agenda. First one is for teacher. Any questions or comments? Paul here?
Hi, Mr. McKeever is here and he has recommended Paul Coco, who's got a math teacher at Golf Middle School and has earned tenure. Paul will be invited back to the tenure reception in the spring. Congratulations, Paul. Yeah, earning tenure in these numbers, just wonderful job.
All right. Need a motion to approve the tenure? Motion. Jesse, second. John, all those in favor? Approved. Congratulations, Paul. And the next one is for teaching assistant tenure?
Tammy Kimbiss is here in the front row. I assume she's. And. Tammy is a teaching assistant at Golf Middle School. Does an excellent job. Shows a lot of care and concern for the students that she works with, works very effectively with the faculty. So Tammy, congratulations.
Thank you. All right. So with that, we need a motion to approve Tammy's tenure. John, Mark, again, Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Congratulations, Tammy. We'll see you back in June for the big sale. Awesome. And then finally, we have for regular business, the resolution to approve the code of conduct for 2324. Need a motion to approve that. Joanne, second. Emily, all those in favor? Approved. Thank you. All right. Moving on to committee reports. Marissa, you're back on.
Thank you, Mr. Vino. So we have a couple instructional vacancies. We're still working on filling. We have a point two art teacher position at Columbia High School. We're looking for somebody to teach one period per day, Monday through Friday. The posting closed on September 18th and Mr. Harkin conducted interviews. We had one uncertified applicant and we are under discussion with that applicant to see how, how far they are in terms of the certification process. We have an earth science teacher at the high school. This position has been reposted with an application deadline of October 4th. And we have a reading teacher vacancy at Golf Middle School. We had nine candidates apply. Golf Administration conducted building level interviews and they are advancing to finalists to Mr. Simons and I. And we have one teaching assistant position in our life skills class at Columbia High School that we are looking to fill and that posting closes on October 4th. For our non-instructional vacancies, we are still looking for two mechanics. We held interviews on Friday, September 22nd, and we are looking to hold further interviews at this time. We have a bus aid position in our transportation department that posting closed today. And Dr. McQueen and I will be reviewing applications tomorrow. We have two custodial worker positions open. Mr. Bickel has conducted first round interviews for our Belltop DPS position. And he is going to be recommending candidates to move on to a final round interview. Our data-based specialist position had to be reposted. That application deadline is tomorrow, September 28th. We have a food service helper position at Columbia High School. That posting closed today and Colleen Wise and I will be reviewing those applications tomorrow. We had final interviews for our monitor position at Janay and we will be recommending a candidate at the next board meeting. Our monitor position at Belltop closed and Mr. Mahar is working on scheduling those building level interviews. Our payroll specialist position closes tomorrow. We have a high level of interest in this posting. Jennifer and I have been reviewing resumes as they come in and we are working on scheduling interviews. And we have two typist positions. One is a part-time position at our Columbia High School library. Our finalist is working on getting fingerprint clearance. And then at Janay, we have a typist position open and Mr. Gregnon is going to be conducting those building level interviews tomorrow. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Marissa. Okay. Jennifer, anything?
Nope, tonight. Thank you.
Okay, right.
Yes, we had a CCS committee meeting on September 13th. I'll just briefly look over some of those highlights. So we officially voted on and added our new newly created E&amp;O Department Chair position as an official member of our CCS committee. We officially voted on and added our new newly created E and L department chair position as an official member of our CCS committee. We then. You know, kind of given a little summary of our last year's program reviews of athletics, CTE and world languages and. Those program reviews will be coming to the board for presentations in October. We do have one scheduled tonight, but we will move that one to October. You'll be getting the full program reviews from. Those groups. And then in addition to that, for this coming year, a busy year for program reviews, we have four of them. We have our academic intervention services. Arts, mathematics and social studies. And those folks just gave a very brief update on the work that they started late in the summer with those. Also, we had an update on a, we, this year at the elementary level, we have a ELA curriculum pilot going on. We have actually two pilots. We have. At the K five level, we have a program called Benchmark that we're piloting in some, some of our classrooms. And then we also have at the K one level. It's called Hegarty Bridge to Reading. We're hoping that those pilots go well with the possible looking to adopt. One of those programs or a combination of both of those programs for next school year at the K five level. So we got an update from Nicole Maney and Lisa Mahar on those. We also had. Eight presentations from our summer curriculum projects, giving an overview of that work. You'll also be, as the last one there, our SEAL civic readiness. Ms. McMonney is going to be coming to present to the board in October on the SEAL civic readiness as well. And then I just gave a brief update of our upcoming professional development days for the school year and then just an overview, again, a little reminder of around the CTE hours that are required for teachers and. Our level three teaching assistants.
Thanks for, any questions for what? So October's been pretty busy.
October will be busy, yes.
He says, yes, Emily.
Can you go back to the pilots? Have they been brought to the board before? Or is this the first time?
The pilots have not been brought to the board. So we're ultimately piloting. We had this year, I'll give you a little history. Last year, we had a. District wide literacy committee, really focused at the K five level. And out of that committee, there were some decisions and some discussions around. Looking at our curriculum at the K five level. We ultimately have great curriculum maps, but looking at the different resources that we're using and it was decided. To bring in several programs, take a look at them and ultimately pilot. A few of them for this school year. So that's where we are with that. If we do look to adopt something, then it would go ultimately to our CCS committee, which would make a recommendation to the board.
And how are you going to evaluate the success of these pilots?
Yep, so we're working on that with Lisa Mahar is doing a lot of that work. You know, we started looking at before, we've kind of gotten it down to these two programs. We looked at six programs. To get it down to these two that we really felt strongly that we wanted to pilot. We're going to be looking at student data, you know, feedback from the teachers that are piloting the programs and seeing where it fits into our. You know, where it fits into our curriculum and is it meeting the needs of, you know, all of our students.
Great, thank you.
Is that something you want to have Roy share out, a little more information on the program?
Yeah, I mean, I would add, see what the changes are and then at the end, if it was successful or not and how they're evaluating it. I love pilots. I love innovating new ideas. But I also, it's pointless if we don't evaluate it in the right way.
Plus, if it's, if it is a successful pilot, you're rolling out to. It's going to be some budgetary impact, so. I love though that we're pushing that reading pieces down to the lower. Thank you, Roy. Any other questions? Alright. Will we yon table motions? None at this time? All business board members, anything? We have a consent agenda. We also have an addendum I want to add to that. So we can do it by consent. We have financial reports, instructional and non-instructional personnel. Sentence of gifts and what recently increased the budget for those gifts, disposal of district property. And also the indent on non-instructional support personnel still adding to the fleet, which is great drivers. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? With the addendum, I need a motion to approve that. John, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. Congratulations, everybody. New business, board members, anything? We have our second public forum, anyone? And now our board forum. Emily, anything?
All set.
All set. Joanne? Jess? Yes, this is a good point.
Yeah, okay. So there were two topics. Mr. Simons and I had communicated about. One is my interest in making sure that the musical programs are retained at both the middle school and the high school level. I know there's been. Usually contracted teachers who, you know, agree to direct these shows. It's a lot of work and my understanding is they are not interested this year. So there's been a lot of discussion among parents who've come to me worried. So my understanding is there's a call for people in the community if they want to apply, but I'll let you. Share, Marissa.
Yeah, so right now, you know, we first have to post to our teachers association. Internally first, since there was no internal interest, that posting can now be found on our OLA system and also our employment page. And this is Mulligan actually may know some folks within the Capitol District Theater community. So she's put out a couple. We've also been working with Mr. Harkin just to get some information in terms of the responsibilities and the time commitment so that when we do have community members reach out, we'll be prepared to answer their questions and. Have a lot ready for them. We also are. You know, encouraging all of our district employees, regardless of union, if anyone has any interest, we would very much encourage them to apply.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Mark?
Just to go back to that a little bit, I know, and I don't know much, but I've also had a couple parents come up to me. I believe there's time limits of when you have to get, and I'm going to use the word in quotes because copyrighted and all that kind of stuff. Are we still progressing ahead on that stuff even though we don't have a leader?
Yeah, I meant what Mike is nodding his head in the back. I asked Mr. Harkin about this after receiving, as there's email regarding it.
I was thinking about that.
With students and trying to move the process along, Michael.
You really want to have the copyright done by the government. So we have the posting, Marissa posted last week, and that was seniors who were in the school last year. And hers had been taught to their directors for summer stock and there's some of the programs.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Cheryl, anything? John, yes.
Just, no, that's okay. That's good. Jennifer, thank you for bringing that up. I don't get a lot of calls on things, but I actually did receive some and was prepared to bring it up as well. The concern is, is the impact of the students. Or there's a lot of students who participate in the music arts that might not participate in other things and. And the parents are very concerned about losing that opportunity. It's been such a. Critical point in keeping kids' interest in school and participating. So. Whatever we can do, I support it a hundred percent. Like I said, I don't get a lot of calls on stuff, but I, I did receive quite a few calls on this. Thank you.
We're going to do everything we can to fill those positions and make sure that the musical. Comes out as high quality as it always is.
I'm sure one of us could be the director.
Anybody is listening. Please call us tomorrow.
And it's a lot of time, it's a lot of time and commitment. So whoever steps up, we truly appreciate the effort.
And even the concerns from a couple of the parents were their kids were the stars of the show. They were. Were the kids who worked behind the scenes, part of the stage crew that they really enjoyed participating in that level. So it's not just about. The few kids that actually. Perform these things, but it's about that whole team that is really a great place for kids to be.
But but I do want to give kudos to some of the students that approached you and, I mean, they, they were very proactive on their own and that was very impressed, impressive when I was talking to the parents.
Thanks. Anyone else? Cheryl? We do have need for executive session for purposes of issues related to items related to public safety, proposed pending litigation and proposed potential acquisition of sale property. So with that, and we don't have any business after the meeting. Alright, so with that, I need a motion to go into executive session. Mark, need a second? Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. So. Great meeting to pick. Participation in government students are done by seven forty. Congratulations.
Have a great night, everybody.